Okay, it's recording.
All right, thank you, Amanda. So let's see, I would like to go ahead and call this meeting of the inland wetlands commission to order on Monday, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty four at seven oh four P M. And I would start with some introductions. We start up on the screen.
You can start here.
Okay, I'll start here. I'm Danielle Monroe, Chairwoman. Now, I'll go to the screen.
If you want.
Did you have to make it?
So bad.
Michael Jordan, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Pat Power for alternate.
Thank you.
Paul.
Welcome to the commission, Paul.
Thank you. Nice to meet everyone.
Okay, and that's all we have on the screen. We also have Amanda Martinez joining us as recording secretary.
David McCollum, inland wetlands agent.
All right, that wasn't too awful. I'm gonna go ahead and seat Pat tonight in the absence of, I guess, let's see, Laura.
Sure.
Okay, and there's everybody that we have. I have my agenda. Any changes or modifications to be added tonight?
Good question. To my knowledge, I have none for you, but thank you for asking.
You are welcome. All right, well then, let's see, the first item on the agenda is new business. Number seven, Rockwell Road, permitted use as of right during request.
Yes. Well, there's a reason why there are a few people here in the audience tonight and why there's not a lot of stuff in the form of paper in front of you. The property owner slash requestor, whatever name you want to call them, I think I refer to them as the notifier in my staff report, is not present nor is their attorney on account of it being pass over. So the notifier's attorney is observing tonight. They did advise me that they got a chance to look at my staff report. It is April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, which I had an Uber drive. You guys all had a chance to read it. They acknowledge that there are some things in here that they have to have answered. The way these ruling requests work, if you don't have a copy of the regs in front of you, this is per section three point two, point two of your wetlands regulations, okay? For what is called an exemption for permitted use as of rights, okay? Mister Jorkin, who has been before this commission before, seemingly for a few months now, for one reason or another, has sought to request an exemption from this commission for activities that he has undertaken on his property. I don't want to explain his request too much on his behalf, because that's what his attorney is for. Pursuant to you guys making a request for the towns land use council to look into this matter at your guys' last regular meeting back in February. I did reach out to Chuck Andrews for his insights on this matter. He helped me craft the staff comments that I gave for your consideration. He was not available to join tonight's meeting, but if you guys would like him to be present for the next meeting when you guys continue this ruling request process, which would be May twentieth, I can let him know. And I'll make sure that he puts an effort to be here, either in person or in Zoom. But the very least, part of this process is you have to have adequate information to review the exemption that's being sought. Based on what has been given thus far, it's in staff's opinion that more information is needed. I'd be inclined to think that you would agree with me. So hopefully, the advocate or the notifier and/or his attorney will have those materials present for you at the next meeting. And I'd be happy to take any other questions.
Don't have any. I would just ask that you have the attorney here and me.
Ours? Okay. Yes. Well, it depends on. Well, it's really up to you. Melanie is the towns council.
That's what I thought that meant.
Yeah.
One Lawrence.
She has been party to this back when it was an enforcement matter in January. And because.
So she's been involved with this.
Yeah, in the background, I would say, yes. And because of.
So who's the other one then?
Chuck Andrews. He has worked with this commission before. When applicants have either been deal denied or have appealed during denials.
I know he is, but why would we use him versus her? What's the difference?
She is more versed in landage regulations.
At both here, that way we're not taking more time.
Okay.
I'd rather get the streamline than this.
Sure, sure.
I'm fine with that. When does the clock run out?
So, so per section three point two, point two, you guys have to make a ruling in writing no later than the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission following the meeting at which the request was received. The request, the receipt, the request is considered as being received tonight. So your next meeting where you would have to make this ruling by would be May twentieth.
So we have to decide then?
That's correct.
At both. And what happens if the applicant doesn't?
If.
Present themselves.
If the applicant doesn't present themselves, then you can deny or you can rule against them getting their.
We made the decision for.
Right, that's correct. That's correct. Yeah.
So I was reading the section three point two, point one, under notification required.
Yep.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm following with this too.
Yeah, so we did receive.
So what do we have? Yeah, and then I'm just seeing this part that says to notify the commission on a form provided by providing sufficient information to enable the commission to properly determine that the proposed operation use is permitted use of a well and a water course or not.
Sure.
Do we, my question is yet, do we have sufficient information? Have we presented that?
Well, let me, let me show you, just so that everybody can see what we have thus far. Let me show you what we've been given, okay? I'm gonna pop this up on.
And my next question would be like, if we don't, or next meeting, fine, whatever happens, if we don't have sufficient information and we can't move on it sufficiently, then what happens? Then we deny this and this. What are they doing right now? They're.
They're applying for an exemption.
And so they're basically just notifying us?
So if you, if you look at the screen, it's a little smaller.
And then if we don't grant it, then what would happen? Then we would require them to submit a full permit.
Well, this is, this is, this is where, you know how the question, this is, it's a good question. This is, you guys have now, I have now formally engaged Chuck, Attorney Andrews, on your behalf. You can, depending on what the applicant's response is and what your decision is at meeting, there are a couple options for you to explore. I don't want to discuss those preemptively. I think that would be a disservice to you guys if we did that. But rest assured, we will have a thorough explanation for all the options very well, so that way you guys can weigh everything with.
Okay. And then it can feel like we need more information? How, you know?
Well, you essentially have, you essentially have two shots to get this information. One of them, for better or worse, unfortunately, has been lost because the applicant and.
Have we asked for the right things? I'm also asking.
Well.
So like, what? He has a lawyer that's very well versed in.
Well, no, no.
He educates me all.
Yeah, so.
I want to know specifically something. What constitutes a quote significant amount of? So residential accessory uses, I think the Mister Marcus pointed out, like three point two points, three point two point three C, right?
Well, he hasn't explicitly said which of the seven uses he is requesting an exemption for.
So wait, real quick, sorry. Such incidental uses shall include maintenance of existing structures and landscaping, but shall not include removal or deposition of significant amounts of material from or onto a wetland or water course or diversion or altercation to a water course. So to me, this seems like this is our legal gray area where we're, and I need to know if I'm gonna be able to make a decision about this, and I need to just. Can you make sure that they know this?
The burden's on him, though.
Yeah.
It's not up to you. I mean, he has to.
Not up to us.
But if it was up to that, I would need to know, I would need a professional or somebody to weigh in, like, I guess it's a hydrologic engineer, but like.
Well, that's where we're having.
What is a significant? In this case, in this case, in this site.
So that'll be a discussion that we have at the next meeting when we see their proposal and we see all of the information that they present to us, and I know that that's a part of the information.
But am I on track? Are we on right?
No, that is, that is, that is a very.
I would say, next meeting, you can ask for that for following decisions made next meeting.
And it's also not.
Yeah, I just wanted to give them enough, whatever.
They have, it's on.
Let me, let me make a note to myself.
But it's not up to the notifier nor his attorney to determine for us what a significant amount means.
We need our own expert.
Right, so that's not what we're asking of them. That's something for us to determine.
Are we gonna get that?
It's for us to determine, so we'll have that conversation in our next.
Yeah, and you will have Attorney Andrews and Attorney O'Brien, pending their availability, of course. I'm hopeful that they would be available that night here to assist you in that discussion.
Advisement, like, do they, how many of the attorneys versed in this stuff? Do they know exactly?
Well, let me, let me put it to you this way. Attorney Andrews has made presentations for the past six years to the clinic of our association. I'm inclined to think he knows what he's talking about. Yes.
Yeah, the applicant may come and say he made no changes, or he may come and say he made a little changes, or he may come and say he's made major changes, which is up to us to figure out, you know, what is acceptable level.
I didn't want us to be prepared with our right professionals and stuff, like, at that time to make decisions, something to make, so we don't get lost.
Absolutely.
I do have one question, just because it's a little unusual. Sorry, I forget the gentleman's name. Blanchett has an attorney as well, or is third party in the, I forget with the whole, how does this affect?
So Mister Blanchett, not to speak on his behalf, but Mister Blanchett still has a right as a, as an. So he has a vested right to follow through on this process and speak as a third party, whether or not he wants to hire an expert to more eloquently speak on his behalf, that's at his discretion.
And I'm not, I just want to make sure his rights and this, because I know it's a little unusual how.
No, of, of course. Of course, and, and believe you me, that was one of the first things Attorney Andrews asked. He's like, I see that in the file, we have a verified petition to intervene. Said, rest assured, everything that this commission has received, it's also been given to Brian as soon as I receive it. Or as soon as I distribute it, it also goes out to him.
May I love asking my question now?
If you, if you want.
You have anything you would like to add in this discussion right now? Not that you have, I just, opportunity?
Well, no, I mean, I just want to, so I just hope you understand, like, for everybody, not to insult anybody, but the way that he's applying right now, he's basically telling you that he is not required to provide you all the stuff that you, that you're saying that you'd like to see. The way he's bringing this to you is he's, he's basically dictating and telling you how it's gonna be, and he's, he's telling you that he's not required to, to give any of this stuff to you. So that's where you guys are gonna, I think, have your debate next meeting. It's not that he's not aware, it's that, well.
But it says here that they need to give us sufficient information.
And his attorney.
Yeah, well, they pick.
Provides sufficient information.
On their, on their application or their.
It's a different application than for a permit.
Right.
So we would require substantial volume of information.
So you guys requested your initial application for it, which we never really got, right? For the one that was withdrawn in February. But he's coming and saying now, no, that was a mistake.
They withdrew the application.
We're gonna, we don't need to do all that stuff that you guys were requesting.
To just ask for this to be.
Let's go before.
We need sufficient information to be able to make that.
I think part of the condition is for Attorney Marcus advising Mister Jorkin to withdraw that application, otherwise I will come back before this commission.
Because once he withdrew it, he had, he would have, if he did not withdraw it, he would have had to wait six months to rescind the application.
I, assuming the commission had denied that application, which I, which I don't want to speak for them, which is what they would have done. I mean, there was a.
Let's also be clear, I want to make sure it's on the record. This started from a concern from a citizen and it was a cease and desist.
Believe you me.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's on the record.
All of the documents.
This isn't the first time.
Have been shared with attorney on.
I want to make sure it's all included.
He is aware of everything. This right now is an exercise of due process, I would say.
And I mean, I'll be open minded and fair. When he comes, he may have what he needs, absolutely. Marcus is a very good attorney. He may already have that.
Before I forget, can you just state your name and address for the record?
Brian Blanchett, four old Hollywood, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I read through it. My main concern was the substantiation of information when they do show up, because that's been a primary problem to begin with, but at the same time, that burden falls on them at this point, so I'd be beating a dead horse to state it, it's just.
We're one for six since this.
But I want to make sure we have our own expert.
We do.
Speak to the hydrology of a river and shifting and moving.
We don't need to get to that point yet. First, we have to decide. Based on these regulations.
If he doesn't show you that it's okay to, that it's okay that the way it is or whatever, then he has to.
Right, yeah, so the hydrology reports and stuff and all of that stuff.
That's why he's supposed to ask.
Come under the, under a permit. And he's asking for an exemption, saying he doesn't need one because of the scope of what he's doing. So now the burden is on.
And also, under section three point two, he's required to notify you guys before any, before he commences any work or starts any work, I'm sorry. He's supposed to notify you. You're supposed to tell him whether or not it's exempt, and then he comes to you with his plan. So we're all, this is all kind of.
Out of order, but this is where we're at. This is how we're approaching it. So we have to decide at our next meeting, based on the information that they give us, whether we agree that this falls under, and exemption may not be the right word, but whether it's exempt from a permit because it's permitted use of rights.
As a right, although I will say, Mister Jordan, that is a handy context clue to keep for later. Our own experts, that is. So, so it might not be put into this process, but perhaps in the future, depending on which option you guys elected to take, you know, for your discussions with myself, Attorney O'Brien, and Attorney Andrews, that may come into play.
And maybe like another sidewalk.
You're not gonna get that through this application.
Stay here with that.
Yeah, so, so just focus on the exemption request right now.
Yep. So, Paul, I know there's a lot of information to review. You may have had a chance to go through it already. Is there anything that you wanted to add? Do you have any questions about this?
No, I'm just trying to follow along.
Yeah, Mister, Mister, what I would advise, when you have the free time, our, our meeting recordings are posted on YouTube. Take a, take a watch at those. I'll let you know which meetings this property has been before, the wetlands commission in one way or another. I think it's worth for you, for context, to watch those and especially go to the context in the Google Drive. The contents for each meeting are preserved, so if, so if you're looking at an agenda from, let's say, this past November, that link still works. So you can see what was submitted on that date and what we had as of that date. And the same goes for tonight's Google Drive. Fingers crossed you've used Google Drive before, but if not, let me know. I'll walk you through it, because I want to make sure you can be as brushed up on this as everybody else has been.
All right, great.
Okay, I think everyone had a chance to comment. We good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I guess we give the discussion until our next meeting on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four.
Excellent.
All right, so moving right along, our next item.
Oh.
I'll be out of country.
Uh, no, it's a Tim remote.
Off country.
I'll be in France.
They don't have internet there, sorry.
And that's a one A M. phone call for you.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that would be cool.
Six there, France, six, I think. France, six, you can.
That's on you if you want to be up one in the morning. All right, the next item on the agenda is business items, so our regular meeting minutes.
Uh, I'm sure. You may have, under new business.
I did. I apologize. We're still in new business. We have one oh seven Plum Trees Road, Wetlands Enforcement, Excavation of Soil Material from a Water Course. I thought that was the same one.
No, it's not.
But it sounds like the same one.
Yes, it does. So, this, at this point, this is, this is more of a notification than anything else. As the property owners do not opt to attend tonight's meeting, I did get a chance to speak to them on the phone this afternoon. I will be meeting them on Wednesday to discuss what they've done out there, but just from the conditions of the property, it appears that they, or someone that was working on their property, decided to use a excavator to dredge out either a pond or a portion of a water course that was on their property. And some of the spoils from that work were left out in the open. I don't know how much was taken out, and I don't know what the ramifications on that work have been, but either way, it was work that took place without prior notification to you or myself at the very least, so.
And it's having adverse consequences now?
Well, it's, it's, it was noticed that there was a lot of displaced soil. There was a lot of turbidity in the water going downstream.
Just from sedimentation erosion.
From, from, from materials being displaced in waters that, at the time, I think there had been a recent rain event, so.
This is interesting.
Yeah.
Can we go see it?
What I would advise at this time is, let me talk to the property owners first. I myself have not set foot on the property yet.
What's the address, I'm sorry?
One oh seven Plum Trees Road. But I would like to go out there, take a look at the conditions myself and just get a feel for what has been done. If, if a sidewalk, if, if, if.
We all kind of want to know where the houses.
Uh, it is not the house at the corner of Rockwell Road. I will, I will show you where. Just go with me here, and let me get this up on.
Past Rockwell, on your way to Blue Jays on the left before Edmund Road.
Going from this direction.
Going towards Blue Jays right before you go up the hill on the left.
Okay, everybody can.
With the river and the bridge and stuff?
I think so, yeah.
That's what the old railroad went through, I should, from the, the one that went along Plum Trees.
So, up here, up the street, that's where my cursor is. If you guys can see this, this is Blue Jay Orchard, okay? It's the top of the hill with the crossing. I'm going back towards downtown Bethel now. So I'm going down the hill. I'm just passing Edmund Road on my left.
Yes, it is that one.
And now I'm at the bottom.
Oh, the little bridge.
The river, the river goes.
Yeah, got it. The water course goes right under Plum Trees Road, right here.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
And the area of work.
Goes on the Limecombe Brook after that.
Yep.
That's Dibble. Is this Dibble's Brook?
I, it might be. I'm not, I'm not so concerned as to which brook it is at the moment as to what, what the effects are.
Yeah, where it's going to.
Yeah, so I do know that water flows south at this, in this segment here. I believe the work where it took place was in the area where my cursor is up on the screen. I don't know if you guys can see that, but try where the numbers are. So, like I said, I'm going to have a conversation with the owners on Wednesday, and we'll take things from there out.
That's not appropriate.
I'm sorry?
No, sorry, I knew someone who lived next door. I thought it more proper. It was cool.
So you guys have any questions?
Nope, no, I get it.
I will give you a day on the twentieth, if there isn't somebody that comes before you form the others.
Okay. Now, I think we're ready to move on to business items. So, regular meeting minutes, did everyone have a chance to review those, I hope?
I wasn't here.
Then you will see.
I will see.
Yeah, everyone have a chance to review. Apology, get a chance to review. Oh, you weren't here. Okay.
I wasn't there. I abstained.
Correct, all right. So can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from?
March twenty fifth?
March twenty fifth? Nope.
Oh, we didn't have the March twenty fifth meeting. February twenty sixth.
February twenty sixth, as written, go March three.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Do we want to do a verbal?
Aye.
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 Yep.
Abstains, yes, yes.
Okay.
All right.
So that passes three zero two.
And then we have a legal notice.
I left this as a placeholder. I, I'm gonna do a brief shift the eyes to the, to the screen, see if Amanda can recall any invoices that we may have. I don't think so.
No invoices.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then we have a staff report up next on the agenda. Paige, you have some information to share?
I do. So, this is the time of year where you guys get aquatic pesticide permits, notifications from the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Their most recent one has come for, what is it called? The Limecombe Swimming Association, the quarry on Turkey Plain Road. They get a outside permit every year with the same group, the pond and lake, which pretty much does all of the applications of this nature in this area. Happy to answer any questions. It's just pretty straightforward.
Question.
Yeah.
Have you observed the site? You're saying that they've done this every year. Have you had a chance to start monitoring it and seeing if there's any downstream effects from pesticides?
That's a great question. Um, it's deep that really has jurisdiction over these. We just got these as like a courtesy notice to say, hey, deep has reviewed this. If anyone has any questions, they have done what they're supposed to do. They've provided documentation. And, you know, this is pretty consistent with what's been done as practice, and it's in, it's in conformance with what deep allows these people to do.
Understood, but do they, do you know if deep does any off-site downstream long-term ongoing reviews of the site, which is in Bethel, which is like our well.
I, I don't. It, I don't know if it would necessarily be relevant to this site, because to my knowledge, this, this water body is isolated.
It's on its own.
Right, yeah, so.
It's like it's in the Simpugbrook watershed, it's right next to it, right?
It, it is within the, it is within the watershed, but it does not.
It's a quarry.
Yeah.
It's isolated.
Yeah, I would say, I would say at least for surface waters.
That's why I have such an allergy issue there too, because of stagnated.
I haven't actually been to the site, it was great.
Yeah, I, in all my years here, I have never. Yeah, I, I, in, in all my years here, I have never been out there myself.
I have, I've been in that water.
Um.
Sounds good.
It was like eighty.
Well, what I, what I would ask, uh, I, is, uh, for me to have an opportunity to reach out to management, because I certainly wanna want to go on their property without having a membership.
It's also locked.
Yeah, um, and, and I, I wouldn't want to have to explain how I got on the property if I don't have a key.
Are you a member?
I was when my kids were young.
So. I don't know.
It's a substantial amount of money as a depo- it may have changed, it's a substantial deposit, and then there was a significant yearly fee.
So, um, if, if the commission is so interested, I can ask the management to see if we can take a look out there or if I can go out there and take a look and report at to what I see.
I'm upset on that, anybody else?
I'm good.
I'm fine with it.
I'm good, as always, any visits that you do, I, I would love to attend just for educational purposes, but it's.
Sure. Uh, 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 you know what, I'll coordinate the visit.
Whatever.
And I'll let you know what it is, if you can't make it, then, you know, okay, cool. Um, the other thing I have going on, I actually do have one other item of, of no's. Uh, in the Wetlands Commission Community Education, I left this on here from last time, it's a placeholder, any thoughts, any ideas?
I'd like the concept is just, uh, timing, like, if, if, if available, I, I would always love to participate in continuing education, it's always just.
Well, I, I will say, and, and I did, I did say this in, in my, uh, last round of emails. Um, your workload this year, at least thus far, has been comparatively light. Uh, hopefully I didn't just jinx us, but, uh, um, i- if, if you guys want to take advantage of this time, instead of canceling meetings, you may want to have someone come in here. Um.
I'd be okay with that.
I, I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay. Who, 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 who would you like to hear from?
What are our options?
Well, you can, you can have someone like an attorney and dress, you can have someone like Cindy Rabinowitz, although I will say she's retired. I don't know what her availability is now, you can have a herpetologist, you can have, uh.
Can we get David Attenborough?
A landologist, um, I could try. I, I, I mean, I mean, you guys, you guys can be like the ships passing in the night, he's going to France and you're coming, and he's coming back to the States. That would be kind of interesting.
Wait, this is, this is good, wait, do you guys?
I like.
Hydro, hydrologic engineer, I don't know, like, stuff like.
All of that stuff is great, uh, I personally like the concept of learning more about the legality behind things, so I think so. I think that an attorney would probably be the best bet for me because it, uh, it outlines the, the legal premises behind the things that we're hearing.
So one of the things that the town offered that, um, you don't think anyone on the commission besides me who's able to attend, did you?
Yep, that's the legal figure.
You, yeah, you were there, well, there were two.
I know I'm not memorable, but yeah.
Uh, always, um, it's not you, it's me.
Stop saying. You're fishing.
There were two presentations that were offered at the onset of, after the elections, at the onset of this new commission. One was a legal, uh, well, they were both legal, but one of them was about Robert's Rules of Order more so, and the other was more about legal regulations. But I found both of them to be very good information, very useful in terms of just being on a commission in general, as well as our legal obligations and pitfalls. And I think those are both available, I think they were both recorded and available.
It was very useful because it was pertinent to the application we had at the time.
It was, and it was just useful in general, and they were, they were different from each other, so, um, I would request, maybe, Dave, would you be able to find out if those two are available and then distribute the links to the commission if they are?
I, I'm inclined to believe that those were recorded, and you should be able to just look them up on YouTube. Um, if you guys can't find them, I'll share the links, not a problem.
Thanks. I would encourage you to do that if you.
Yeah, yeah, cause it, it, legal counsel in any fashion is kind of the step that I see most.
We may, but we may want further additional legal counsel just with our commission, if we end up getting, like, I've got questions about potentially, uh, updating our regulations, for example, which we're gonna talk about in a minute probably, but I wanna settle your ramifications to that and be coached through it and know how we write that, how we, how we would present such a thing. If it's going to commission, uh, what the process is for that.
Sure. Sure. Uh, I, I, I would make a point to, um, dissociate the two and have the, the, um, the continuing education stand on its own and then have whatever you guys grew with respect to your regulations, be it's own entity, you really don't wanna cross the two.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Could you keep your eyes open for continuing education, anything that, if something pops into your head through your professional travels? Can you keep sharing that with us?
So, so I have a subscription, or I am, I am subscribed to, uh, the Yukon, uh, Clear Calendar. And, uh, I forget what Clear stands for, but, but it's essentially the extension program for Yukon that helps deal with the land use commissions. Most of those presentations they've been making as of late have been focusing on saying zoning commission, zoning board of appeals for better or worse. Um, they did have a recording that came out, um, I think last week or the week before on, um, repairium buffers, that as soon as that comes out, I will distribute to you, because I think that would be very interesting.
Repairium buffers and vernal pool buffer zones, somebody had brought up to us an email not that long ago.
I, I don't know if, if vernal pools were in on that, but I definitely know repairium was, I can look into that for you.
Okay, I have another one, can we maybe get Laura in here, somebody from the health department to discuss septic at some point?
Um, yes.
Education purposes.
Um, I, I, I will say, uh, that, that, the health, uh, has, uh.
I would think they only know footages.
No, no, how, how.
I wanna say, I'm curious about how it works from, I wanna synthesize the wetlands protection aspect and the building aspect and health aspect.
Well, the, the.
I know, I, I know that they're, they are all related.
A- as, as much as, um, wetlands and health um, purviews, the areas overlap with respect to, um, soils and soil types and how they behave, um, the, uh, health department, I don't wanna try to speak too much.
They're not soil scientists.
Um, no, 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 so, some of them, some of them are variable versions, soil scientists, and, and they have to be. Cause otherwise, if, if, if the soils don't function the way a, a septic system that's being proposed would warrant them to, you know, probably. So, I, the, a- as, as much as there's, there's some overlap there, there are a couple of obvious standards that the health department has, like, you're, you're not gonna be able to put a well in wetlands. You can't have a septic system located within X number of feet of a wetland, I think it's fifty, if I'm recalling that correctly. Um, but that's essentially where the overlap ends. For, for, how I understand it, I mean, their, their, their MO isn't necessary to say, oh, there's a well in fifty-one feet away, let's see how this septic system affects the well, that's, that's your jurisdiction. To say, okay, you're proposing a septic system here, how does that affect the groundwater hydrology? Where is the effluent that travels through the soil going? And if it is towards that wetland, what effects will it have?
Mm-hmm.
That's your purview. I, I don't know what involvement the health department would have really to speak to that, because they're not wetlands.
Well, they, they know how septic systems work, right?
Right, they, well, of course.
That's all I was asking, was just to, like, you, you said continuing education, so I'm like.
Yeah, I don't know, that, that's.
That's the one for me.
That, that's fair, okay.
Does anybody else think that they've, like, crashed course on septic?
I think what Dave is saying is that the health department understands how they work, and they won't ever be close enough to a wetlands to be something that we would need to be concerned about regulating it, because if they approve it, then they've already determined that it is an acceptable feature to have at that location.
I don't like that separation of power, I think I want more and more.
I think you want more of someone like a soil scientist who designs where a septic could be.
Yeah, the soil, to learn about regulation rates and different types.
I mean, I can't speak to the health department, but there are more, fifty-one feet.
That, that would definitely be a soil scientist.
That'd be more a soil scientist explaining why.
And they don't have to be explicitly linked to a health department to know and be able to explain how soils behave. Uh.
But I want, you said that, that there are people in the health department who understand so, um, soils and septic systems. That's all I was asking.
They understand how the soil works, but I, I think you want, I think they would have a more general conversation than a soil scientist who designs a septic system.
And.
Does that make sense?
I understand what you're trying to do, Nico, you're trying to bridge the gap, you're trying to bridge the gap between how the soil operates and its impact on health.
Well, since we're responsible for the wetlands, yeah.
You're just trying, you're trying to bridge that gap, and we're, we're also trying to determine whether or not it's pertinent or within our pur- purview to bridge that gap, because there's.
Bridge what gap?
Um, if it's a necessity for us to bridge that gap, because it falls under different jurisdictions for decisions, but it's good knowledge to have.
I just want the knowledge of how the systems work, so I can invest in the decisions that I'm supposed to make. Or the worst.
Let me, let me, I, I think I had tried.
You don't think they'd be interested?
Oh, no, 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 I, I had tried to approach this before, and the health department essentially said, we do our health department thing, you, you do your wetlands thing, I'm, I'm confused.
What if you have a soil scientist come in here to explain rain gardens and septic systems?
Yeah, I, I, I really think what, what you're looking for.
Septic has to do with hydrology.
Yes, yeah, so I, I think if, if, if you really want someone to, to do the whole soil science umbrella, never mind.
I was just asking about septic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Keep it specific.
Yeah, um.
We can talk about this.
Sure. But I, I think i- if, 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 if you're going to go to that length to have someone focus on um, how septic systems work, I, I think it's worth incorporating under, under, yeah, excuse me, other underground systems as part of that conversation, because, because our, our cold tech chamber behaves, some of the principles for a cold tech chamber may be the same as a septic system.
I would love a re-crash course on all of that.
Yeah.
Whatever you can get.
And, and I, and I think if, if you're going to go for one, it would be worth having someone that can speak.
If you know, yeah, what, what the realms are in.
Yeah, and, and, and so I, I definitely think a soil scientist would be most appropriate for that. Let me put my feelings out there and see who can do that for them, for us, and how soon they can do that.
Yeah, it's, it, in your trouble.
Absolutely, okay. The, the, the only other thing I have, I'll keep this short, um, Aquarian sends out every year a, uh, a request for this commission to nominate um, uh, a candidate for their stewards of the environment program. Um, I unfortunately did not get a chance to put this up on the Google Drive, but it's pretty boilerplate language that you guys have seen every year that have done this, if you guys want me to make copies for you, that's right. Yeah, this is, this is, this is a program that they've been doing fourteen years on now, okay? Uh, so I can make copies for you guys, if you have a candidate that you think would, uh, would fit what Aquarian's going for with that program, um, you can follow the instructions on the website, the Aquarium Water website, and I can help you with that as necessary, okay? That's really all I have for tonight.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, about a property? There's property being cleared at the end of Worcester Street, that I believe the back is wetlands, has a permit been filed for that clearing? Or are you, are you aware of the work that's being done?
Okay.
I'm not saying needs a permit, I just know the back of wetland for previous.
Guide me, and I will try to answer your question as best I can, so let me pull up.
I think it's the second to last parcel.
Okay. So this is just, this is where we just were.
I mean, I don't even know if they need a permit to clear it, or just.
Okay, well, let me get my bear out there, okay, so we are. This is kinda how.
There you are, okay.
So we are here, this is the municipal center, right, this is Worcester Street.
Yep.
I'm panning up Worcester Street, driving north, okay? Panning Key of the Street, passing one leg of Juniper Road.
Keep going.
Coming to the turn, passing a net, passing the other end of Juniper.
That's okay.
Here's Durant Avenue and the storage facility.
Yep.
Okay, here's Passage Road.
Going.
Uh, I believe Canfield, if I'm getting correct, is on.
Top left.
Okay.
There.
Where?
Uh, right there, where, nope.
This?
That, I can't see your, that, where your cursor is.
This parcel here.
Being clear cut.
Oh, wow. Is it really?
Yes, it's definitely being clear cut.
Good eye.
And again, they may not need a permit, I don't know regulations, but I believe there is wetland.
Is that the Danbury border right there?
It's right, it's, I think it's the last property, yeah, I mean, there's more work being done down the road, but that's separate, that's Danbury.
Okay.
That's being clear cut.
I don't have, um, off of.
Do they need a permit to clear cut?
Well, it, it depends on where they're cutting on the property, if, if, if they're cutting within one hundred feet of a wetland.
Good. I, I haven't drove into it, I just know.
At, at, at the very least, they, they made an administrative agent approval.
Okay.
So, I, I, let me see if I can find a map for this property that may show if, whether or not there are any wetlands out here, hopefully there aren't, and if that's the case.
Well, if their property borders a wetland.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, if, 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 if this definitely does border a, a wetland, if they're doing clearing within one hundred feet of that wetland, then they should.
And they may not be going up, I have, it's uphill, and, but it's goodbye trees.
So, so let me, let me see if I can get out there, take a look, or contact somebody. I, well, um, there was a real estate agent in, in, uh, that had walked into the land use department a week or so ago to inquire about this property, they didn't say anything about doing any work out there. So I'm curious as to whether or not they know about it, and if they do, why they didn't ask me when they were there. So, let me figure that out, and I'll report back to you.
For it by eight times a day.
Okay, good catch. So I think we've kinda got our, we're in the commission comments now, I'm sure.
Um, oh, we did continuing education, yep, so commission comments, correct.
Okay, okay, um, I suppose I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at this on, on your behalf, um, there's, there was a general question floated about, uh, this commission's regulations, and whether or not, um, you guys wanted to make any changes to any of the texts. Uh, whether added material or removing material or having it be reorganized, so, um, I will say, i- it's, it's a more involved process than just having someone type up in Word and saying, I like this, and cool, uh, you actually have to have, um, a, a public hearing or, um, a text amendment, okay, and it would just be like, an, an application. I, I will say, um, in your legislative role in amending the, um, the regulations, if you guys wanted to consider doing that, you guys have the greatest, uh, uh, line of discretion, but you have to be able to base all of your information on some kind of evidence, whether it's scientific or qualitative or quantitative, you just, you just can't make an arbitrary number. Okay, um, so, I, I, I'll, um, I'll air the idea out to you guys, and if there are any particular ideas that you have, let me know, um, and if, and if the, the commission gets a more concrete idea of what they wanna do, perhaps the next meeting, I can reach out and say, hey, the commission wants to do this, uh, do you have any recommendations on how, I, I know how to do it, but do you have any recommendations on how we follow through?
I think it would be beneficial, we would have a discussion together to as to exactly what it is that we were looking to, to implement before we, we like dive down that rabbit hole of trying to get other people involved or taking steps in the process, because, um, quantitative, qualitative information, I love the terms, but then you're also talking about statistics, so then you're arguing statistical information, which is always just, I, I work in statistics all day, they're easily manipulated to defend, so it's, i- if factual data is. it would have to be our real bedrock of decision making.
And and keep in mind, you also, your scope of authority is limited to what the DEEP.
Yes.
And the Clean Water Act allows you to do.
They're the floor, right?
That's, well, they're the floor and they're also the ceiling.
Ceiling at the same time, yeah.
So just be constant of that, if if the state regulations or state statutes say that you cannot implement that, or if you don't have jurisdiction over that, then you can add it to your regulations.
So they act as the baseline, right, in the ceiling.
And and furthermore, I'm sorry?
Well, one thing that I know that the state regulations do say is that, and we'll go over all this in greater detail. Um, or we should now go soon, but that they I believe they say that this, that municipalities can go further with the stringency of our regulations as long as they're in as long as they're in defense, more protections of the more, if there's ever a question between the state regulations, if there's ever a discrepancy question between the state regulations and the local regulations, I guess that's what I'm referring to, that we're supposed to side with the more um forget the word that they use in the rights, the more strict like interpretation of the regulation, but I guess that's neither. Yeah, that's in, that's in administration of the regulations.
If you understood your.
Well, we need to have the right, we need to have the state regulations in front of us.
Yes, yes. I I.
Be for this, I think.
Yeah, I I.
We can bring those materials to there and then have the attorney here to handle your questions about legal stuff and things like that. Right?
Well.
I think that we should compile our questions first before bouncing them.
Why don't we do that amongst ourselves?
Yeah, yeah, we should do that first and then compile those questions intelligently and then bounce them off somebody who would have the answers to it.
I I would recommend you guys review, I think it's chapter four forty of the state statutes.
Okay.
That's and that specifically addresses in the Wetlands or Watercourses regulations.
And go over ours again.
And and compare them to yours. There's, there's also the state's model regulations, which those might be a little harder to find, but I know I have a copy somewhere, so I can shoot it up video.
Can you? Cool. So you can email us any of this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think you've distributed a great deal of information too.
We have a lot, we have a lot, no, we have.
You have a lot. We have the document that you sent out, the regulations document that you sent out months ago.
And many, many other things. Good place to start is to make sure that before we're looking to make changes with what we have, to familiarize ourselves with what we. Yeah, and make sure that we.
That's our assignment for this month, this next couple of weeks or so.
I think that would be a very smart approach. I think that would be a very productive use of your time.
Okay, before we start talking about any specific things.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. Okay, I agree with that.
I have a random, another question, if we're in commission comments.
Floor is yours.
Oh, have you had a chance to revisit site for Jennifer's Way off municipalities?
Yes, I have.
Clearcutting there is going.
Um, they have, it's only application before us now. I did make a point to the property owner that I want to go out there again before they put anything else in the ground or keep anything else on the property. Um, the application, interestingly, the application that they brought for us does not include the detached garage. I do not know why that is.
We did a segue walk through, correct?
We did, yes.
The application before zoning now?
Right, that's correct.
Doesn't have a detached garage.
It does not have a detached garage.
Lars did not have a detached garage.
Yes, it did.
So what does that mean?
So so I, so for for now, it means they're not building it. I don't know if that means they want to consider it um for the future, if they just wanna work with the house right now, um.
They just clear cut the land and.
Right, they they did, um, but who's to say?
So that's in the law now.
Well, who's to say what that area is going to be? If they don't end up going with a garage for the foreseeable future, it it may be in an area that's that's worse to say, hey, don't have it be manicured lawn, wanna have something else there. But I I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, um.
But we permitted an application with with certain things in mind, certain buildings, certain constructions.
But if they're doing less rather than more, that certainly wouldn't be a violation of what we offered them.
Maybe not, probably.
Yeah, but it's gonna be.
If they're doing less rather than more, I don't know why it would be a violation. We said you can have ten, and they only took six.
Well, it depends on the specifics of the site, right, and if there's not a lot of.
I think every permit that we approve has a bit of change in the field. Anyone who's ever worked construction can tell you, there's always some type of, yeah, my, I mean, not major, but some type of modification may occur in the field, because.
Okay.
And it's not, we're not to regulate what the buildings are, we.
Exactly.
Zonings.
Yep.
Just make sure it's not significant.
I mean, they like added the garage, that's a good story.
If it does, I will let you guys know, and I will let them know, and I will say, hey, you are making an amendment to or your component in amendment to your approval. You need to come back for the commission so that they can.
Oh, and you you see that stuff happening, okay.
Absolutely.
We've had that before.
And then absolutely, okay. So I I believe in me, I I intend to keep tabs on that property while the soil is exposed. Because it's a lot of property, and it's a lot of earth that's.
It looks so stark right now.
Yeah, I I I I'm sure with with respect to how you guys saw the property, it 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 looks like a different planet.
Yeah.
I I that would not surprise me. Um.
That was a really magical, mature piece of woods that the town lost there, for the record. And it, as far as our amendments toward, you know, what we're gonna talk about, you know, Pat brought it up, I'm gonna think back on it, this this clear cutting is uh a problem in the state that it currently exists, in my opinion.
Yeah, it it's.
Without proper fee and fees in lieu of for the environmental cost to the community, the natural and human community.
But is that.
Causes, but they paid for the land.
But is that under a preview in a wetlands?
But what?
Forestry.
That's just not under our.
We're not forestry.
And they also.
Well, this, well, this property was almost, most of it, we had a significant amount of it was ordering and within our upper review area, and I would also consider us increasing our overview for lots. I'm gonna propose that as well.
Sure, I I mean, if if.
We're low for the state's.
If if you can demonstrate.
We're low.
If you can demonstrate that um this commission has been um disservicing the environment by having a buffer that is only a hundred feet from wetlands. I mean, you have to substantiate that. Every town's a little bit different. The the arbitrary number that most commissions use, my experience is a hundred. Some go down to fifty, some go to a hundred and fifty, some go much more.
Oh, we get data on that, yes, yeah, we send us some stuff, we have some.
Right, right, and and it 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 all depends on the inventory of natural resources you have, what you're trying to protect, and how many resources you have to keep those protected. Um, I will say, as diligent as I try to be with this kind of stuff, I'm only an army of one. So I I I will do my best with with whatever the commission wants me to do.
We're your soldiers too, man.
Right, right, but but I I do. I'm the one that's charged with the day-to-day operations. I I'm the one that's um that's able to keep this stuff on the quickest recall, no disrespect to you guys.
That's your job, literally.
It's literally my job, okay? So I will do my best with whatever you guys um throw at me, but just just be conscious of that as as we look forward. Some towns may be able to have a larger alternative area because they have more staff, they have more resources to go out in field to look. Okay, so I that's really good at that, but do definitely look through everything else in the meantime.
Yeah.
I I didn't mean to put you off there, Madam Chair.
No, not at all.
Okay.
I was letting you finish your statement. Um, any other comments from the commission members? While you've been quiet, I wanna make sure you have a chance to, you good?
I'm good.
All right, anyone else? Okay, then we have uh public comments, Mr. Blanchett being our public tonight. Is there anything that you wanted to add that you didn't have a chance to?
Sure, uh Brian Blanchett, Four Old Hollywood Road. Anybody take the um comprehensive inland wetlands municipal training course that I recommended last time?
Not yet. It's it's on my list. I'm gonna do that.
And you can go back and review it as many times you need to as well. Okay, seriously, you can learn some stuff, especially like just procedural stuff, and now it's helped me keep my sanity.
That's the best. I'm really, really impressed that you did that, and I'm looking.
It's it's simple, but yeah, do it.
Yeah.
You can do it on your own or whatever.
Did you send us a link to that, or what did we have? That's called a comprehensive inland wetland training.
It's deep through, yeah.
We do, we did this when we first started, right?
Well, you should have, no, we just, you all have should have.
Uh uh if it was an online course, I did that.
And. This is, if 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 nothing else, Mr. Improto, this is a huge wink wink to you, since you are our newest member. There is a comprehensive municipal inland wetlands agent program um that I would recommend. Um.
Was that the DVD?
I did it.
It's a series of videos?
It's a series of videos.
A bunch of stuff. I, yeah, so I did this once, but I, that was three years ago.
Yeah, but you can, you can actually get certification if you.
That's why I thought.
Oh, great. Oh, they actually certify?
Well, you can actually get the certificate if you complete it.
They don't hand them out anymore since COVID, but you can get it digital.
Yeah, so so if if you watch the DVDs, you'll essentially get all the knowledge that that the course offers, but if you take the course online, then you get credit from the certificate.
Awesome.
Okay, so.
That actually be good. I'd like to do that.
Absolutely.
Plus rereading a book sometimes to get more out of it.
I don't know how many times I've said this, I I will say it until it blurs the face or wherever else, but please, watch the course. It is the bedrock for you guys being commissioners. None of that information isn't relevant anymore. It's all very pertinent, it's all very useful, and it is, I think. Brian, I think.
I do, I mean, especially because if you look at all the case law, like, there's no- nothing pretty much since two thousand seventeen. All the lessons, I think, have been considered something, kind of pay attention to what already happened.
I mean, I read it, I watched it three years, three years now, but I watched it like a deer in headlights the first time I watched it.
Right.
You can only absorb so much, but once you sit in the seat for a long time, you learn stuff through action, and it's.
Yeah.
It's like rereading a book and learning.
You not expect to to go through the entire course in a day, because I think it's what? Uh.
Like eight to ten hours.
Yeah, you 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 theoretically could do it in a day, but you're, but you're gonna be like this come the end of it, okay? So work at your own pace. Please start though, okay? At the very least, please start, and if you have any questions, the process is something else.
Yeah, I watch all the videos, someone says, uh emails the online link. That actually works easy for me, because that that's a break from staring at Excel.
Okay.
Right, any other? Tamra, and we have no other public comments, Mr. Blanchett, does that contribute to your contribution? Okay, then uh we are at the end of our agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would love to make that motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh then I.
Me first a minute.
First and second, so shall we have a vote? Mr. Improto?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
It's unanimous. We are adjourned at.